Good evening. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on this 10th of January of 2022. If you would please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Legions. The following is an excerpt from a prayer by Reverend J. McMilljilton, given on July 4th of 1848 in the consecration of the Washington Monument. And I quote, "Direct us, O Lord, in all our doings with the most gracious favor and further us with thy continued help while we acknowledge thee to be the Lord our God and offer thee the services of our lips. May our hearts be devoted to thee that we may bring forth the fruits of holiness in our lives and show by our deed that we are the faithful servants. Be pleased to perpetuate our free government and continue its blessings to mankind." Unquote. In your most holy and precious and gracious name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just like at home when my wife moves things. I hope she's not watching. Is there any additional items for the agenda? What I would do is, just for your information, we're going to remove and reschedule the Equity Task Force to the January 24th Board Meeting. Some of the individuals out of town are not able to make it. Anything else for the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can we remove item F so that we can have discussion on that under new business?
Okay. Item F, removed from the consent agenda under new business. And seeing that A, we'll just make it item number A. And that will be the purchase of four Dodge Chargers. And that'll be item 5A. Any other changes to the consent agenda? Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any public comments?
Yes, sir.
No public comments. Moving right along. Old Business under item 4A. My screen dropped again.
It's me. It's property disposal.
Yep.
Yeah. So this property is the vacant lot at 110 Alcott Street. The city and county foreclosed on the property in 2012, and the city deeded its portion of its interest to the county. We brought the original offer to the board and, in the amount of $1,600, the board had declared its surplus. We advertised the initial offer in the St.ford Herald on November 3rd, and no upset bids were submitted. And so we're just now asking to move forward and authorize the chair to sign all the documents.
Any questions? Any questions of Ms. Whitney? Do I have a motion to approve, authorize the chair to sign any and all documents to effectuate the transfer of the property?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the offer and authorize the chair to sign any and all documents to effectuate the transfer of the property. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item.
Yeah, that's also me. It's Sheriff Watson Road, supposed to be 6966 Sheriff Watson Road. The county, or yeah, the county foreclosed on the property in 2013. Again, the board had declared the property surplus, accepted the initial offer of $8,577. The offer was advertised in the St.ford Herald on November 3rd, and no upset bids were received during the 10-day period. Once again, just asking the board to approve and authorize the chair to sign any and all documents to effectuate the transfer.
Any discussion?
Live to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the board to offer and authorize the chair to sign any and all documents to effectuate the transfer of the property on 96, excuse me, 6966 Sheriff Watson Road. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, the item of purchase of four Dodge Chargers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll give that a start. There was a lot of questions about why we were purchasing Chargers when I think the interest of the newly elected chair, or newly appointed sheriff and his chief deputy are to begin the transition to SUVs like most departments are doing. So I wanted to give the board a little update. As the finance officer reminded me back in Mar- May, in my negotiations with the sheriff, he originally had requested eight Dodge Durangos. And after some horse trading, we ended up with four Durangos and four Chargers. So, you know, the belief was that, you know, recently, there's been difficulty in purchasing the SUVs. They're out, you know, very far into the future. The thought was that we'd go ahead and purchase Chargers. But after some discussing, discussions, I think it's still the intent of the sheriff's department to try to purchase SUVs, whether they be Explorers, Durangos, or Tahos. And they, the new, the new chief deputy and the sheriff would like some time to explore whether they can get those vehicles before they do anything different. So I would propose that we give the new sheriff and his chief deputy some leeway and allow them to go out and see if they can find orders for, for the Durangos. Now, if we change the Durangos, you know, change the Chargers into Durangos, there's going to be a gap in funding there. And I think the number's around 60,000, the difference in the, in the, in the four vehicles. So I'll be happy to discuss that any further. Chief Deputy William Sterkey's here tonight, so if you have any questions for him. But obviously, we're going to make the change to SUVs for, for the road patrol guys. Probably should go ahead and, and stick with that and see if they can get those ordered. William, you got anything you want to add to that?
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good evening.
So when discussing previously about the purpose of us needing SUVs rather than these patrol vehicles as the Chargers would come, the capability of the SUVs far more better suited for us in rural areas. We've experienced maintenance issues from going out rural driveways and bottoming out and tearing out undercarriages, front ends that have needed to be replaced, top ends of motors and different things that we've just experienced become an issue later in the budget from a maintenance perspective. And with that being in mind, and trying to keep that in mind, in addition to transitioning moving forward, we believe it's best suited for our office. I think it helps us work better, helps us work more efficiently, and also believe that it, in the long run, could potentially be a cost savings to the county. And we think that's in our best interest, and we would appreciate you guys looking into that and considering that for us.
Any questions of chief deputy?
How's the Durango maintenance-wise and things like that been holding up for?
So, so far, they're doing well. We, we just got our first fleet of those in this year. We've not noticed any, any maintenance issues as of, as of yet that comparable to Chargers. We've noticed a lot of top-end issues with the motors in Chargers that we were getting into. And as we all know, anytime you go into a motor, it's not cheap. So we're yet to see, but we're definitely not having the undercarriage issues either. I mean, the capabilities of these vehicles better suit us, and we're able to, we're not having the issues that we were having before with, with that. And we're not concerned with those issues because of the ground clearance and other maneuverability and options and opportunities they provide us.
I can see why you're talking about the difference in the type of vehicle and how it meets your needs. The, the thing that got my attention was, are we still going to end up with the same number of vehicles that you needed?
Yes, sir. It'll be, the only thing that I understand will change was where we were asking for four Durangos total, and we had compromised on getting four Chargers instead of, four Chargers, four Durangos instead of eight. We'd still end up with the same number of vehicles. We would just be going back to the original request by our office to, to have eight Durangos in this budget.
I got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Vice Chair.
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Do you need, do you need action from us?
Yes, sir. If I can get a motion to give the manager and sheriff the authority to pursue the additional Durangos, and after we know if they're available, we'll, we'll bring a budget amendment back at the next board meeting. But if they're available, we're going to need to move quickly to go ahead and get, and get the order in. And likewise, if we, we can't get them, then, you know, we'll go back to, you talked about if there's any other alternatives on what they can get. So we just need a little flexibility there that it's okay, because they are going to be short if we, if we move forward with that. And we'd be bringing a budget amendment at the next meeting.
Are the Dodge, are the Durangos on the state feed, or is that it?
Yes, sir.
What about the forwards that, like Raleigh uses?
Yeah, they have Explorers and Tahos, both, or all three, you know, Sheriff. Yeah, they all have them.
Four-wheel drive?
You can get them, but the question is what's available and what's been spoken for. So that's to be determined. There's a phone call in to the Dodge dealer that we've been purchasing our vehicles from. So I was hoping to have more answers for you tonight as far as availability goes and what we might be seeing in the future. So hopefully, I can have more information tomorrow as I get back. But the Durangos are available as well as other SUVs. I just don't quite know yet what that, you know, what that time period may be. And if it seems to be too far out that we can't manage what our current fleet has and operate the way we need to operate, then we would explore other options.
Can we authorize in this motion to allocate whatever funds are necessary in order to get the four vehicles? Can we include that so that there's no time delay and once they identify?
Yes, sir. And then we'll, you know, actually bring the formal budget amendment to you at the next meeting.
And a quick thing to add to that, I don't want to interrupt, but the, what my understanding is that the Dodge dealership that we're using currently did a blanket order of X number of vehicles, maybe 200 Durangos. And as we said, moving quickly is essential. I think it's whoever can say, yes, here we are. Here's the paperwork. We're ready to move forward. Is that, that's who gets what?
Do I have a motion to move forward?
Make a motion, move forward.
Motion's been made to authorize the county manager and chief deputy to pursue the purchase of four Durangos for the county sheriff's office. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board.
Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget procedure calendar. Is that time of year again?
It's hard to believe it's already back. So before you, you have the proposed budget calendar for this upcoming budget year. Things of interest, we obviously have our board retreat scheduled for 27th to 28th, where hopefully we will get your guidance as to how you want us to move forward into the next year's budget. We propose submitting the budget to you at a work session on May 16th at 4:00 here at the McSwain Center, and then we'll have the formal presentation at 6:00 that night. And then that will start the next day, starts the period for commissioner review. And you'll see there we have to be determined as, as far as budget work sessions that you may want to have this year. We hope to have the public hearing, or plan to have the public hearing on the budget on June 6th, and have scheduled June 20th to be the adoption date. Be glad to entertain any questions or comments you have, or if you want to go ahead and set work sessions, we can go ahead and put that out there for the department heads to be aware of.
Any questions of Lisa? Commissioner Lovick?
No, good, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Carver?
Lisa, we're still doing the, the work sessions, right? It's just that we haven't scheduled them yet? Is that right?
We are waiting, awaiting guidance from the board as to what your pleasure is this year. We did do the line item reviews last year with every department coming in. We did not know what the pleasure of the board was for this year.
I'd like to move that we, I do move that we approve the schedule and schedule as, as appropriate work sessions to do line item reviews.
Motion's been made to approve the budget schedule as well as set up budget work sessions to review line item reviews. Any further discussion? Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the proclamation for School Choice Week, January 23rd, 29, 2022. And Commissioner Carver?
Yes, sir. Give me a second here to get back to it. Proclamation recognizing the week of January 23 to 29, 2022, as School Choice Week in Lee County, North Carolina. Whereas all children in Lee County should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Lee County recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Lee County to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Lee County, and whereas Lee County is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which school, from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. And whereas education variety not only helps diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas Lee County has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, the Lee County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of January 23 to 29, 2022, as Lee County School Choice Week, and we call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens, adopted and proclaimed this 10th day of January 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the proclamation recognizing the week of January 23rd to 29th, 2022, as School Choice Week in Lee County, North Carolina. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the manager's report.
You have before you the November 2021 financial report. And as you will see, and as I caution you each time, sales tax do run three months behind. As far as tax collections, we are roughly 1.4% ahead of the same period last year. And then in reviewing expenditures, our target was 41.67%. As we've continuously explained, the percentage used column on your report includes encumbrances for the entire year at this point. So we exceed in several departments, but if you back that out, we only have a few departments that are exceeding at this time, governing body, finance, strategic services, and IT. Governing body is overdue to annual dues that have been paid. Finance is overdue to audit costs. Strategic services is overdue to annual service contracts on equipment. And IT is over the target due to expenses for equipment and annual maintenance contracts. Any questions on the financial report before I go to sales tax?
Any questions of Lisa? Okay.
On sales tax, on page 190, you'll see our regular sales tax distribution. We, at this point, when I did this, had only three months received, and we are ahead of our target percentages for the quarter, for the first quarter. We are starting to see a little bit of slowing in our growth rate. We're still well ahead of what we budgeted at, so I'm not setting off any alarms, I'm just keeping you up to date. So we're anxious to see what the second quarter shows, and it could be reflective of people going back to work, and people are now working back outside the county and maybe shopping on their lunch hours and stuff like that, where almost people were home working for COVID, they were shopping online and having items distributed here. So hopefully, it'll all still come out to the, to our good in the end. Any questions?
So on the, if I'm reading the right chart, the historical analysis on the very bottom fiscal year 2021, 22, over on the far percent change is 11.83%?
Yes, sir. Which is still very good. Less than last year.
Any questions?
You did index the targets from the previous fiscal year, right? Reasonably well, yeah.
We tried.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
County manager's report, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to add a couple of items to my report before I get into actually what I have written in the agenda. First, I've been asked to remind the commissioners that we're still accepting comments on the strategic plan. And if you can forward that to, if you haven't submitted your comments, please forward that to Jennifer or Haley. Wanted to go a little, go over a little bit of the interlocal meeting from last week with the city. The first item on the agenda was water and sewer, and got an update from the city on their capital project that they planned for both the water and the sewer facility. And I don't know if, if, I know Chairman Smith was there and Commissioner Carver were there, but there were some very large numbers that were thrown out by the city in what they were going to do to expand the water, but mainly the sewer plant. And the partners that they've developed accounted for Fuquay Barina, Chatham County, Pittsboro, and Siler City, I believe it was. So they have quite a bit going on there, and those jurisdictions are buying into those plants. So, you know, there was some discussion about us getting into the water and sewer business, and if we were to do that, we would need to buy capacity from those plants, and we're talking millions of dollars. So that was where that discussion went. Then there was an update on the Colon Road site and what the city was doing to finish our site and get it ready for development. Still have the issue of the unsuitable soil. That is not contaminated, so it's just unsuitable for building on, that they're developing a plan with their consultant to deal with, and also talking with adjoining property owners about the possibility of expanding that site and creating additional industrial sites since we're down to the last two marketable lots in CCEP. So we're going to end up with a product issue in on, at the interlocal, I mean, at the all boards meeting with the Saga San Fernando Growth Alliance on the 20th. We probably will talk about product with them quite a bit. We also had a discussion with the city about our joint operations at the Buggy Building. The owner is wanting to sell the building. We have three years left on the lease and wanted to make sure that the city was still committed to that. After some discussion they had about expanding or building an annex, all the property they own out at their place. So it sounded to us like they were still committed to that and that we needed to work with them and Saga to keep everybody together for the one-stop shop. So we'll be discussing more about that in the future. We also went over our ARP list that had the projects that were potential, that we could use our ARP funding for. Also had the city's list as well, and there were a couple of things on their list and our list where we could work together. The big one was some housing improvement, the program that Karen Kennedy runs with the urgent repair program, talking about using funds to support more of that, because they have 50 or more applicants in the pipeline that, you know, could receive help in improving their homes, and also talked about some low-income housing and other projects like that. Then we gave them an update on our county projects, would be pretty much what we told you all at the last board meeting. And so we're pretty much finished with the park projects, and the big project we're trying to wrap up right now is the government center. So got a lot going on there. So from my report, I wanted to talk to the board a little bit about Magnetti Morelli. All operations have ceased by Magnetti, and they turned the facility over to us on December 26th. So at that point, we secured the building. All utilities were transferred to the county on December 30th. So we're now in complete control of the facility. We've hired two part-time people to monitor the facility, and their electrical bill, the last month that they were in the building was about $42,000. So there's a lot to monitor and try to get under control and reduce. So we felt that was a good investment to hire those two people. Plus, we needed to clean up the building on the inside, and that cleanup has, has begun. It's a huge facility. I don't, now that it's empty, when you walk through it, it's, it's enormous. It's an enormous building. And then there's, you've got to remember, there's five buildings. So I'm just talking about the main facility. And I, I think, once we get some safety hazards out of the way and can actually walk through the facility without me worrying about everybody who's walking through the facility, we want to set up a tour for the board of trustees and the county commissioners to go through, and we're thinking the second week of February. So we will try to get a date out to everybody on that so that we can do that walkthrough. And all I can say is it's, it's a lot more to the facility than I thought, and as we go through it each time, we understand it a little bit better in, you know, how to at least hold the facility until we can get through the hazardous waste permit with our contractor terroquest and get that permit cleaned up so that the community college can begin work. But it's an impressive facility, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it a lot coming up now that we're in complete control. Our next item is COVID-19 update. The big number for me for today was 27. That's the number of employees that are at home today, either because they've tested positive or because they were told they needed to be quarantined. So I also talked to the city manager, they have 31, and so that's a lot. I don't know that we, up to this point, have had that high a number. I think we've been close, but that's the largest number to date of having employees out. Over the weekend, the health department was notified of 600 new cases. That was the largest weekend, I think, ever in the pandemic, and they've been extremely busy doing testing, and they're still giving the vaccination shots. So the health department is back to that perpetual, you know, issues that they're dealing with ongoing basis, basis extremely high stress. So the good news is, is that it appears to be less severe. There're just more of it out there. So Heath, you want to, do you need to add anything to that? Do you think I covered enough? All right. Thank you, sir. So upcoming meetings, just remind the board of the annual all boards meeting with Saga on Thursday, the 20th, at 5:30. And our next board meeting will be at the Civic Center on January 24th at 6:00 PM. And then we have the, our budget workshop kickoff on budget workshop kickoff on the 27th and 28th. Once again, we'll be in the conference room area of the Civic Center, so we're looking forward to that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman. That's my report.
Any questions of the manager?
One question on water and sewer, going back to the meeting with the city. Every once in a while, it seems like we visit the idea that somehow Lee County is gonna have their own water and sewer treatment. But after listening to that discussion the other day, I don't see how that's even possible. Certainly, the number of customers that we could acquire are falling by the wayside as the city signs them up. And even this discussion got into some people's opinions about ARPA funds. Certainly, for Broadway, that's a done issue. That's not the thing I'm talking about. But possibly looking into our own way of being able to do it, some sort of a trial or an assessment or something. And it just seems to me that, on its face, based on that meeting, we're barking up the wrong tree if we try to go that way, and maybe just eliminating it is something that we're, quote, considering, unquote, seems appropriate. Anyway.
Well, I did, I think, I think we have talked about water and sewer quite a bit since I've been here 14 and a half years, and we always go back to that point where we sold our water system. And I think when we sold our water system to the city, that pretty much dictated our future, that we would be out, because the only way to get back in now would be actually to run parallel lines on water, and that's really not economical at all. So what you, what we would have to do to get into the water and sewer business is we would have to partner with the city again, and we'd have to buy into that plant. And, but we would do it without knowing that we had any customers, you know? So it's like, I don't know how you, how you would do that without having any customers. You, I mean, you're talking about a lot of, lot of cash flow. It's something that, you know, maybe that train has left the station. And if, if you have some developers who wouldn't come to us, who don't want to be annexed, I don't know that it would be much of an issue anymore. So, but the, you know, the one number that was kind of astounding to me was 170 million was the investment in the sewer plant. And then I just said, okay, well, what if we were to buy it? And I was doing a quick, I did a quick-
The water, the water treatment plants, the actual water and, not the sewer.
I was just looking at the sewer. I did a quick treatment. Okay, what if we tried to buy in a million dollars? I mean, I mean, a million gallons per day, you're already talking $10 million upfront. That doesn't even cover your operational expenditures or anything else, just to get a piece of that action. And I don't know how, I mean, we're getting $11 million, $12 million in ARP funds. You'd spend all your ARP funds buying into the plant, and then you'd still have to figure out a way to cover operational expenditures, and then how to extend lines. And I mean, you're just talking about a very cash-intensive proposition, so I think it'd be difficult. There may be other ways to do it. There may be ways to talk to the city and extend water and sewer without annexation, and what would that look like? And I guess our, our main interest in doing that would really be out at the old Lee County Industrial Park, where there's still some buildable lots, and you have several businesses out there that are not annexed and who do not want to be annexed. So maybe we need to get back to the, to the table with the city. There was an agreement with them that expired in 2019, that there wasn't a lot of interest in extending. But maybe we go back to that agreement and figure out a way that in some instances, maybe we could do that, extend water and sewer without annexation and share tax revenue with them. So, but I don't see where that would be something that we could do a lot of unless there was something we could buy, you know, to get into the business and have customers and, or have a big industry come to town that says, okay, we're only gonna do business unless we do business with the county, and the county needs to be the water and sewer supplier. But you gotta have somebody at the end. You gotta have revenue. It's an enterprise system. It'd be very difficult to get into. I think your observation was correct, and those numbers they were talking about on Thursday kinda scared me a little bit.
I think that leaves you to the point that our relationship with the city as it relates to annexation is still on the table, and maybe that would be something that we gotta kind of look at as a reality, rather than, oh, well, someday we'll get our own system. I, I, anyway.
There's a couple of hurdles there. Trying to, trying to get permits now to do your own discharge or, or pull from the river would be extremely difficult from DEQ. So you're, you're kind of limited there.
Well, that makes a point, then. I guess maybe at the, at the retreat or whatever, we need to move our discussion on as it relates to this whole issue of annexation and how maybe our legislators are involved. Anyway, thank you for the update.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, sir. All right, and we'll go ahead and go through commissioner comments before we go into closed session, starting with Commissioner Lovick.
A new year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Hope everyone had a great Christmas and New Year. Haven't seen all of you since last year. Seems like a long time. But no, I'm looking forward to another challenging year, it sounds like, for our health department and everyone else. So hopefully this pandemic thing can get behind us very shortly, and I'm proud of our county, to where we're moving, where we're headed, and I see good things in our future, and I'm, I'm just glad to be part of the team. And each one of you that's on our team, thank you again, as always. Thank you, sir.
Madam Vice Chair.
Just hope that everyone stays safe and healthy.
Commissioner Carver.
I guess I'd have to agree about the COVID. We just look at the population here tonight. We can see that we've got some challenges. So I'm just thankful that we're all robust, I think, and we can recover if, in fact, we're unfortunate enough to get it. One thing I was thinking of is that I've had a chance to get to know briefly Jen Waterhouse, who has been recently hired, and she just really, I feel, my impression is that she's doing an excellent job of getting her arms around this very difficult American Rescue Plan issue, and I'm thankful that we hired her. The other thing is that obviously, Ms. Minner is also very much involved in that process, and the fact that we were talking to the city just a couple of days ago is encouraging. And I, I just hope we continue to think about the fact that that money is a unique tranche, as they say, a unique amount of money, and what we're trying to do is make something that's going to be enduring, like maybe 20, 30, 40 years, and make an impact in some particular area of our county. And I'm just thankful that we have that opportunity. But I appreciate the work that's already being done in a very difficult problem. So my thanks go out to the staff in that regard. That's it.
Thank you. Have a few comments. First off, Happy New Year. Glad that everybody that's here this evening is here safe, and we trust that you'll continue to be safe. Chief Deputy, I need your card before you leave. I do have a thank you note, and this is just wanted to let you know how much you're appreciated, Chairman Smith and the Lee County Commissioners. We want to thank you for your continued support of Lee County employees and for the premium pay you authorized at Christmas. It was very much appreciated, and it's from the Lee Soil and Water Conservation District, and signed by Ryan Falk and Teresa Nicholson. So I want to say thank you very much. Without further ado, Madam Vice Chair.
Yes. I move that we go into closed session per NC General Statute 143-31811A5 to discuss the acquisition of real property.
Motion's been made to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A5 to discuss the acquisition of real property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Cameras off, microphones off. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.